Sort of flood them with information. You know me, I'm not shy to meet with anybody to talk about our schools. I think one thing that I've learned over the past month or so is the amount of information that is inside my head and sometimes comes out on a piece of paper can be very overwhelming to the average person. I've given the school committee tonight in their packet sort of a back step on that and starting to take items that are critical to us, class size, sort of the history, so people have an institutional knowledge of how much money have we gotten over the past years? And was it working? Because I think people forget, they watch school committee meetings and they may hear us talk about a level service budget and a needs-based budget. And then, once we get our appropriation, everybody kind of goes away and we have to make do with what we have. And I think year after year, people may forget, it's not what they do for a living, it's what I do for a living. I don't forget about the amount of money we're functioning on. And so I think just sort of those history points at face value, when you're talking about chapter seventy, just talking about chapter seventy. When you're talking about class size, just talk about class size. When you're talking about grant funds that we've received year, one year compared to another, just talk about the comparison years and not put it all in one document so that people can see it broken out. And then they can ask questions related to any one of those things that we can then tie together for them. So that's kind of what I've learned over the past month or so. So we've been having those discussions. I think meeting with the PTOs, which we've done since last year, continuing to do this year is good too, but that's a focus group. That's a very small focus group. So sometimes the open forums, I'll ask Jim in a couple of days how that went, in seeing who comes to those. But, you know, I think having it multiple times, you know, may be a good idea, even if it's me. You know, and sitting in a room when people want to ask me questions, they don't have to just send an email or a phone call. So we'll have some more discussion on that, but I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Moving onward, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lutere.
Second.
Second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote?
Ms. Leonard.
abstain.
Mr. Lutere.
Yes.
Mr. Matucci.
Yes.
Ms. Petrie.
abstain.
Mr. Purington.
Yes.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes. May I have a motion for the minutes of September ninth, two thousand twenty-four?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Mr. Purington. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Lutere.
Yes.
Mr. Matucci.
abstain.
Ms. Petrie.
Yes.
Mr. Purington.
Yes.
Ms. Barry.
abstain.
Ms. Powell.
Yes. May I have a motion for warrant SPW twenty-five dash five in the amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-six cents?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lutere, second by Ms. Barry. Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Lutere.
abstain.
Mr. Matucci.
Yes.
Ms. Petrie.
Yes.
Mr. Purington.
Yes.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant SPW twenty-five dash oh-three in the amount of two hundred and fifty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and six cents?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Purington.
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Lutere.
abstain.
Mr. Matucci.
abstain.
Ms. Petrie.
Yes.
Mr. Purington.
Yes.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll warrant SPW twenty-five dash oh-four in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Lutere.
abstain.
Mr. Matucci.
abstain.
Ms. Petrie.
Yes.
Mr. Purington.
Yes.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes. May I have a motion to accept a five thousand dollar donation from the Ticket Resale Team, Inc., for the pre-K program?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Mr. Purington. Any discussion?
I would just like to thank the donor who has asked to personally stay anonymous. Obviously, for myself, I know who the individual is, a giving person who cares deeply about our schools and wants to have us utilize those funds any way we see fit with the preschool. So I'll be meeting with the preschool team and Jennifer O'Connell to talk about any needed items that we may need for our kids and some, like, creative thoughts, you know, something that we wouldn't otherwise purchase with budget dollars that would be an extra. I think when somebody makes a donation as such, it should be something that can last for more than a year, you know, that kids will be able to have in front of them for a few years. Five thousand dollars is a lot when you think about pre-K. Our schools are outfitted, we have enough cubbies, materials and supplies that we need, toys that we need for our classrooms, manipulatives. But there's always something that, you know, you sing the song, "If I Had A Million Dollars", which has sort of rolled into my life as a superintendent a few times, and what would you do with that? And, you know, five thousand dollars in a pre-K classroom is a good chunk of change. So we'll be meeting to talk about something cool that we can get, and we're going to get some way in from our little pumpkins as well, to see what they're looking for.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or nays? Hearing none, motion passes. Don't believe we have buildings and grounds tonight?
We do have it.
Subcommittee report policy.
Yes. So Ms. Petrie, Ms. Leonard and myself met right before this meeting to review sections E, F, and G in the policy handbook. And in most cases, we adopted what MASC already has and made a couple of tweaks. But as of today, we would like to request a motion to vote E, F, G in full. The full committee will have the opportunity to vote in the entire policy book, once we have that all together.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve E, F, G in form?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Petrie.
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or nays? Hearing none, motion passes. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. So we just discussed this a minute ago, but in your packet, I provided the committee with some historical background data that you have, I believe, seen but in different form, as I discussed earlier. I put something in there on enrollment, on the current class size, chapter seventy history, going back, I think I went back probably seven or eight years, per pupil expenditure history, budget trends, which I think are important, knowing what we ask for, for a needs-based budget, a level service budget, then what the actual appropriation was, and also noted there, if we had to reduce services, using the term "cut the budget", so if we were looking for level service and we didn't get a full level service, how much money did we need to cut from that proposed level service budget to get to the allocation of funds that we received? So I provided you with that. And then I did some student subgroup trends. We have a lot of subgroups. So I like to look at them as a group, so have them all in on one spreadsheet, whether it's our students on IEPs, whether EL students, all the different subgroups we have. Gave you a little history of that so that you can see how the percentage rates have changed for our students over the past seven years. Why am I providing it in this context? Again, just a different visual for people, to be able to look at things at face value and to also share some information with you that I think is important to continue to share with the override committee and the community, again, in a way that's understandable outside of my head, so sometimes less is more on a piece of paper. And it does also enable people to ask questions without getting overwhelmed. So if you're looking at something on class size, you know, that could spark questions about the one I gave you, shows the current class size in K to eight, and that's seven teachers per classroom, with the exception of grade eight, which has eight teachers. That may spark a question, well, what would that look like if that number seven went down to six? Would the class size look like? You can do the math on your own and get it down as low as you can. But that information will continue to be shared with folks, but I wanted the committee to have it in their hands first. Couple of questions that came across this week. Update on the Neil Shapiro Theater. We have not been able to effectively rent out the theater to folks. And again, it's not a money-making theater, but people in the community, dance studios, and the town sometimes needs to use it in the same manner that we did in the past. We used to have a theater manager, we used to have people that operated the lights and the sounds that are in the back of the theater, that are in a big room that has all kinds of technology in it. We have struggled with getting theater management, so adults that know the theater well enough, that can organize our students, because our students were the ones that were doing the lights and the sound, but under the direction of somebody who is skilled in that area. We're going to try again this year to recruit some of our students, and we have some new teaching staff that may take up that interest. But just for general information, when we do rent that space out to dance studios or community organizations, there is still a fee. There's a fee for the use of the auditorium. If folks are also going to use the cafeteria as part of that rental, they have to pay for that space. Or a classroom, there's additional cost for that space. There's always a cost for custodial support, so that's in the custodial contract. And yes, at some points, they're in the building anyway during their contractual hours, but they're doing the work that they're supposed to be doing according to their contractual day. So whatever their list of items are that they're supposed to be doing for the cleaning and upkeep of that building, this rental space is in addition to that. So typically, someone else comes on and covers that and is paid to do that. So working on getting lights and sound and a theater manager back, we just wanted to put that in your thoughts. An update on FKO, so I know we've talked about FKO coming to the Fort Banks School, back to the Fort Banks School this school year. It is definitely a benefit to our students, it's a benefit to our traffic, definitely alleviates some of the traffic. So as of now, as of the beginning of the school year, FKO has been up and running. We have a rental contract with them, and that rental contract had been done years past by Paul Hardnett, who's the school committee's attorney. So we used a similar version of that and had to change some of the numbers around because times have changed a bit. They are billed monthly for the use of the building. They'll be here with us from the first day of school through the last day of school, and they pay three thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars per month. And that cost covers the custodial, again, the custodial contract. If people are renting space in the building, it's additional work above and beyond their day-to-day functions. So that covers that cost for the additional custodian, and it also covers some minimal cost for utilities, heat, electricity. They bring their own supplies, so they don't use our school supplies. They have their own supplies. They actually have a container that's outside of the fort near the play area, and they bring their materials in and out. They are in constant contact with Mr. McInnany. They have staff that are there. They tell us who the staff are who are working there so that we're aware. There are very strict guidelines from us in terms of when you're in our building, you have to follow our building rules, which includes what doors you use, letting people in and out, which is not allowed, and all the usual and customary safety protocols that we have, they have to have in place. So things have been going great. I believe they have forty-two students in K one and two right now that are attending between after-school and picked up at five-thirty by their families, and things have been going very well. So happy to report that. The twenty-fifth is a half-day across the district, so for parents to remember that. Couple of other reminders, principals have asked me to remind families that we have an online anonymous bullying forum on every webpage, the school district's webpage and the school's webpages. Anybody can go on and utilize that at any time, if they suspect something or if they're concerned about something. Once that is filled out, it automatically pings Ms. Gallivan and a few other people to act, the building principals, to act on that, looking at that form and reviewing that and getting back to the person if need be, but if it is anonymous and they don't put their name, doesn't mean we don't act on it, we still have to do so. I think one of the things the principals wanted to drive home is to strongly encourage people to continue the mindset of if you see something, say something. Whether it's about bullying, whether it's about harassment, whether it's about safety, you walked by the school, you saw something funky going on in the parking lot, you need to pick up the phone and call us because we don't know what we don't know, and we would love to be able to see what you see. So if you see something, just give us a call. It might be minor, but it might not be super important. And the last thing is for parents and families, as we do during the school day, our teaching staff, continue to encourage your children to report to you or to a staff member anything regarding friends, students that they come across in the school that they believe are not safe. Whether it's things that they've heard, doesn't have to be in school, can be after-school, can be on a weekend, things that they have heard from a friend that have left them feeling uneasy. We have had an incident this year in which I'm very proud of some very young children who did exactly what we asked them to do. It allowed us to look into a situation that we wouldn't have known about and take action on that situation and be able to help and support a child and their family. But also, more importantly, not more importantly, equally as important, work with the two students who came forward with their concern to keep them anonymous and to keep their friendship going. And this is not a one-time incident, this happens frequently, but it's, we really need parents to be in that mix. We have lots of staff that can act on those things, but we need to hear about them. So continuing that, they've asked me to get that out there. Fire drills are happening in all of our buildings, being recorded. We have to record the date, the time, the weather, how many kids came in, how many left, how much time it took, and we have to report that to the state. So those have been happening the past few weeks. ALICE certification, which is our intruder protocol. So that's all of our staff, K to twelve, including custodians, participate in ALICE certification training, which is an online interactive training on how to react, which we won't go into detail about because, unless you work here, really, you don't need to know all of our ins and outs. But it does give teachers, ESPs, custodial staff, kitchen staff, substitutes, an understanding of what to do should there be a need to what they used to call lockdown and lock the school down, and what are you supposed to do, and how the teachers need to talk to students about that. Because we expect our students to listen to our adults and follow the directions of our adults. So there's a test that's accompanied by that. It's a working condition for us, it's one of our mandatory trainings. Folks have another, I think, four or five days to complete it, and then we go in and track to see who's completed it, who hasn't, and then we follow up with that to make sure everyone is trained. In the coming weeks, Chief Goodwin will be setting up the onsite trainings for staff. So students won't be in the building, but staff will be in the buildings. It's nerve-wracking training, however, it needs to be done every year. And part of this training is how do you deal with the students in your class and directing your students? So that is happening. This was Hispanic Heritage Month, so our ML department, I have to give them a shout-out. I got a copy of some literature and messaging that they sent to all the teachers. The ML department got together and put out all kinds of great resources. If you walk around any of our schools, it's important that you can see the Hispanic heritage, pictures of folks, books up, people that look like other people in our school building. So lots of conversation in classrooms, lots of activities, links to different things that teachers can try. So a shout-out to the ML department for the work that they put into that. Curriculum night happened at the Cumming School last, this past Thursday. Mrs. Olery reported the attendance was a little lower than she expected. She has high expectations, and we love that about her. So she felt like her communication was really good, just must have been something in the air and not as many folks as she thought would have attended did. However, the staff did a great job. We had lots of extra staff there to do translation for families, and that was good. Teachers felt supported with that, families felt welcomed. We have our first early release day is Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. I think I talked to that, to you guys about that. Let's see, Gorman Fort Banks has their curriculum night on the twenty-sixth, and that's five-thirty for kindergarten and first grade and six o'clock for second graders. Believe it or not, we're going to start talking about the Washington DC trip for the eighth graders. So on October first, Mr. Curley will be pushing out information about parents needing to come in for a meeting about that so they can sort of get that up and running. High school, October tenth is their curriculum night. I don't know if anyone goes on the high school website, but you should. So one of the things they have is something called Wake Up Winthrop. I don't know if you've ever seen it. It's the students do a radio show, and they highlight out all kinds of stuff. They're pretty funny. I go on and watch it for content to make sure we're all behaving ourselves appropriately, and I fingers crossed that we're doing so. But the talent of the kids when they do this show is phenomenal, and I was going to say Chris Donley, but it's Brian Donley. Mr. Donley oversees it and helps the kids put it together. They talk about everything from extracurricular activities to athletics, to things going on in the schools, to projects they're doing. They had one kid on there who was like a food guy, and he goes, like a restaurant, goes to restaurants and tries food. And he was hysterical. But the point of it that was very cool is we're constantly pushing collaborations with the community and getting into the community and getting people to know who we are. And he did a review of La Siesta. I'm going to tell you, the kid was spot-on. He was funny, he was positive, and if you know La Siesta and many, many other restaurants in town, they are the most giving people. They're always hosting a night for us, always hosting a ten percent, you get ten percent back for the kids. So it's really cool to see our kids promoting local restaurants that help us. So that was just cool. So jump on if you can watch Wake Up Winthrop at some point. Cell phone use at the high school, so we could talk about this for about six years. I'll talk about it for two minutes. Last year, the staff, in part of our, you know, push with communication with staff about how we're running buildings administratively, one of the things the staff wanted to see was more, or a different type of administrative support around kids utilizing cell phones in class. So they were feeling struggles with kids constantly having their phones out. The kids know that it's a policy that you cannot sit in class with your phone out. Your phone's supposed to be in your pocket or in your backpack. This is high school level now we're talking. And the reinforcement of that, teachers, of course, are teaching, but there are thirty-two times in a period that they have to say, "Put your cellphone away." Some kids do it, some kids don't, some kids put it away and take it right back out again. The staff felt like they needed to get together as a group and say, "How can we help resolve this?" We know we can't take cell phones out of the hands of kids at the high school level. I mean, technically, you could. If you wanted to spend six and a half hours a day disciplining kids, that might be a good way to go. But we do have a procedure and a policy that we ask the kids, and we respect their age and maturity level, to keep their cell phones in their bag or in their pocket during teaching time. When you leave the classroom, you have transitioning from class to class. When you're, you know, at the end of, yeah, you're at lunch, you're in the hallways after school, you can utilize your cellphone, you can even plug it in in the hallway. In order for us to enable you to continue to do that, we need, as a school, to reinforce not having it out as a distraction in the classroom. We also need to reinforce with our teachers of not having kids utilize their cell phones for schoolwork, because every kid has a device, so there should be no reason. So I think the work they did over the summer and prior to that at the end of the school year about staff and administration getting on the same page, about expectations, reinforcement, holding each other accountable. Mr. Crombie reported that he had last week only, I think he said, four incidents. So if a child has a phone out, the teacher asks them to put it away. Second time you get asked, you will have to do a detention. If an admin gets called to the classroom because you refuse to put it away, or you've been asked multiple times, you have a meeting with admin, they're going to have your phone for the rest of the day. You can pick it up at the end of the day, and then, you know, can have a conversation with your parent. But there is some accountability in terms of doing extra time after school to remind you about the policy that we have. So students were notified, they have been continuously notified, and Mr. Crombie and the staff right now feel as though that sticking to their expectations and giving the kids the expectations ahead of time, again, reinforcing them, but following through, has made a difference already. It's, this is a marathon. This is a marathon. We continue at the lower elementary and at the middle school, have pretty strong restrictions on kids with their cell phones. We've heard from parents, many parents want their kids to have a phone on them, they need them after school, they need them. Parents feel like they need them to get in touch with their child in an emergency. Well, the phone's supposed to be in the bag, you're not really going to get them. We encourage parents to call the office if you need your child. We can probably get to them faster than you, especially if their phone is in their bag, as expected. So just a little update on that, because there's been some rumblings about that. Extracurricular activities, just in terms of athletics, I haven't reported on in a while. We have about two hundred and seventy-five students participating in ball sports. Cross-country doubled its size from previous years, which is great. Varsity golf is doing well, they're five-five and one. Soccer team had a little blip, but they're back on track with a two-one win over Arlington. Volleyball also got their second win of the year over XL Academy, which was pretty cool. They play at home tonight against Pioneer Charter. Girls soccer had last week off, and they have a home game today against Gloucester. Football lost Friday night, but they were playing Shawshank Tech, and Shawshank Tech has only lost two games over the past two years. So I think we held our own. They are home Friday night against Danvers. It's always a fun night, tons of people down at the field. And middle school track won its second meet of the year. There's forty-eight kids doing middle school track. That's a lot of kids. So just speaks to the importance of anything after school in keeping our kids engaged. Today, twelve senior athletes went to a leadership meeting in Sargus. It was a conference led by MIAA with multiple students, which is different than the conference we do here with them about being mentors and leaders, just an additional twelve, you know, twelve students that administrators and staff identified as kids who are strong leaders that we would like them to go and meet with other kids, see what it's like in other schools, and listen to MIAA. Public relations quickly, no, not yet, I'm sorry, enrollment. Two hundred and ten kids as of yesterday with fifteen kids in the portal. Fifteen kids in the portal means that we're in the midst of registering fifteen more students. We have a very strict, but, I'm going to say this because there's been a lot in the news, strict but legally compliant registration process. We've worked with the Department of Education, you know, because there were questions or concerns about our registration process over the past two years, phone calls, not concerns, but phone calls asking us to clarify. So we did clarify everything we do to register students. There is no one strict requirement in terms of some folks that cannot get a landlord because they're out of the country, and the landlord cannot update their lease that expired last month. Some communities that have been in the newspaper lately say, "Okay, well, that's too bad, you can't go to school." We have alternatives. We can go to your house, we can come in and do a residency check, we can have conversations with a landlord, you know, if they're there and they want to talk to us to verify the residency. But we do verify every single registrant, including our students who re-registered in grades three, six, and nine. We have a handful of students who could not prove residency in grades three, six, and nine, and they have since moved on to the community that apparently they are residing in, which is not here. So we continue to keep our focus on that, based on our class size, and making sure that we're being equitable to the students who live here and then equitable to students who don't. So it's not some kids get to stay and some don't. Residency is the key to your existence here. And that is, just for kicks, grade three has the highest enrollment with a hundred and sixty-six students. And the next winner is grade five with a hundred and sixty-three. So that's quite a bit. Our smallest class size is grade nine at one-twenty-two, but when I looked at the enrollment coming in, seems to be, ninth grade seems to be hitting the number. So we have about fifteen kids waiting to enroll, and a handful of them are ninth graders. And that's all I have.
We have homeschool application.
We do, yes.
Thank you, Lisa. That was really helpful and very informative. So actually, I wanted to just say something to the committee, more to the committee- So actually, I wanted to just say something to the committee, more to the committee than to you, but as it pertains, and thank you so much for coming, Kathleen, I thought your comments were really helpful, and just say that both Julie and I have been working with the Citizens Committee, but if there are things, I mean, I'll just be transparent, I've been hearing similar rumblings and getting increasingly concerned about, you know, what we can do to effectively, you know, message this override. So if there are any, if there are any comments that you want me to pass along to the Citizens Committee or suggestions, ideas, I'm going to write an email this evening with the idea for the public forum, which I think is a great one, you know, with people who know, particularly you, Lisa, and representation from the school committee, but if there are other things that people want to say out loud tonight, or they want to email me privately, I really would love to be a conduit to that committee, because time is running out, as I think we all know, and I share your concerns.
And Caitlin is meeting with me on Friday, but that will just be in addition to Caitlin Barrows, who is one of the leads on the committee, correct?
Yes, she is the lead, yeah.
Any homeschool applications?
We do not have any.
Any personnel appointments, new hires, resignations?
Yep, I talked a lot, so I needed water. Sorry, Patty, where am I? Just a few. In the back. Just give me a second. We have, we have athletic, winter athletic coaching positions have been posted for girls' basketball, boys' basketball, indoor track, boys' indoor track, girls' indoor track, boys' and girls' indoor assistant track coach as well. Spring positions have also been posted, and you can see those on the high school webpage, that's for tennis, outdoor track, lacrosse, baseball, softball, and sailing. We have a food service worker position, that's cafeteria worker position, it's five hours per day on school days only, so that is open based on resignation of somebody who'd been here for a long time, who didn't retire, but I want to give a shout-out to Eileen Molly. She is leaving us after several years, she's like, she is the GOAT of transportation and cafeteria working, so she also doubles and does the bus monitor with Mr. Callie to pick our students up down the point. So she's leaving her kitchen worker position, but thankfully staying as a monitor on the bus. So that position has, somebody internally took her position, so that opened up another position. We also have one more part-time position in the food service worker arena, and that one is for four hours a day. And I believe that's it. I lost track of myself. Yes.
Public relations.
I got that too. We have, our annual walk, bike, and roll to school is Wednesday, October 9th. Athleti Cummings in Gorman Fort Banks, PTO is hosting the annual trunk-a-treat, which is so amazing. They're doing that on October 25th from 4:30 to 6:30, again, that's Winthrop residents only, and I believe there's signup for it as well, I believe, is there? There's signup to donate, I'm going to double-check to see if you have to register. Years ago, we did, I don't think we had to register last year. I know that the line runs all the way up to Lucky Convenience Store, so. StuCo is running a back-to-school supply drive from September 20th to October 11th. There's a box in the front office of the high school to donate any supplies or backpacks. And I believe that is it right now for public relations on my end.
Flu clinics? Flu clinics?
Oh, sorry, yes, the flu clinic is, on the last page. The flu clinic is Saturday, October 5th from 9 to 1 at the Senior Center. They're also offering flu vaccines on Tuesdays between the hours of 9 and 5 at the EB Newton School right across the street from NICS. Registration is encouraged, that's on the public health website, on the town's website, or you can call to register for your flu shot at 617-539-5837, and that's for all community members, not just school employees. We push it out to the school employees via our email, but this is for the public as well.
All right, wonderful. Any other public relations? Hearing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Ms. Petrie, you all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes, we are adjourned. Thank you.